Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. DeHany, I think we're ready to go into manager briefings.
Ms. Mayor, at the next, at the request of Councilmember Rouse, the next presentation will be about the concept for the mobile portal application that offers citizens a one-stop-shop experience to interact with the city. The portal will be delivered in a phased process and incorporate feedback and input from citizens as part of app development.
Hello, I'm Chris Golding. I'm the Application Development Team Lead within IT, and I'm here today to talk to you all about a new concept for a updated mobile portal. So what we're looking to develop with this mobile portal is a citizen-centric app that brings data from a bunch of different systems together to provide citizens with a one-stop-shop to interact with the city. So we're looking to bring things in like billing and payments, account info, services. And what we really want to do is increase our interactions with citizens by providing them with a personalized dashboard where they can kind of get a snapshot of their interactions with the city, push notifications to let them know about either events or, you know, maybe a, some sort of event or something. Integration with city platforms and other applications. And we also want to seamlessly integrate with VBgov.com and our upcoming website, which I believe you all will be getting a briefing on in the next couple of weeks. We want the app to be available on iOS, Android, and the web, and we want to deliver the app in incremental stages, which is where we're going to, excuse me, sorry, release the, release initial version of the app, start gaining feedback, and start incorporating that into future iterations. So today, what I want to show you right now is what we're looking at for the first iteration, which we've called Phase One. In Phase One, we want to lay out a foundation for our future releases, introduce that personalized dashboard that displays data that doesn't require authentication, so we want to allow citizens to be able to provide an address, and we can display things like property data, their nearest facilities, voting information, trash and recycling schedule, and then support for broadcast push notifications. What that, what that means by broadcast push notifications is, let's say, a couple weeks ago when we had the, the third was turned, was made into a holiday, that we could have sent out a push notification saying that city services were impacted that day, and so a citizen could have made, you know, adjusted their plans if they had, were planning to interact with us that day. So what the goal is to, once we deliver Phase One, is to first deliver that to a set of testers to start getting some feedback on the app and take that feedback and start incorporating it into that version and then future versions. We'll take those iterations, and the goal will be to deliver something that better meets citizen requirements for both citizen, the city departments, and of course, city council requirements to, sorry, I lost my, lost track right there, to make sure we're delivering an application that best meets what everyone is looking for. Once, so, once we deliver Phase One, we have some high-level items that we're looking to deliver in the additional phases, things like an integrated citizen profile and login, so username and password to log in, where we pull, start pulling in data from different systems together and displaying that to the citizen, bring in service requests, payments and billing, want to have a chatbot within the application itself, and bring in any additional services that we possibly can bring in. And then, once we have that, we can also do user-specific notifications. What I mean by user-specific notification is a notification about, let's say, an account that maybe there's an over, or a unusual activity on, we could say, we've sent a notification to that user to take a look. So it's all about us being more proactive with our citizens and getting them to, you know, kind of see what's going on. So Phase One, we have a couple mockups here. When the user would first launch the application, they would get a, the ability to enter their address. Once they enter their address, they would get taken to the second screen here. This is where they would get a dashboard of kind of their view of the city. We're calling this the MyBB page. This is where you'll get your trash and recycling schedule, your closest facilities, and we have the ability to link out or call those facilities or get directions. And anything that doesn't fit onto that second screen, things like links out to other applications to be able to say, pay our, pay your water or sewer bill, something that we don't have integrated into the app yet. We have an overflow menu where those items can, those interactions can occur. And then the last screen here is a, is a news screen. We actually pulled this from one of our other apps because I think it's, it's one of my favorite screens we have, and it's a, the idea is that we have a single interface where a citizen can see basically any news that's going on around the city. So we're pulling in news from our news releases, our Twitter posts, YouTube posts, and featured topics off of VBGov. And then we can pull in things like Instagram and any other news sources that, you know, are deemed appropriate. All this, of course, as I mentioned earlier, we want to deliver this on multiple platforms. So the, the application will be available on, for tablets, the desktop browser, iOS and Android. And the goal here is really to go to wherever the citizen is to let them interact with us. Previously, we had released some of our mobile, our last mobile portal was a iOS and an Android app, but moving forward, we found that not everyone wants to interact that way. Some people want to come in through, want to use a web browser, so we want to provide access to everyone however, however they would like. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. If it's okay, we'll start with Mr. Rouse and Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I just want to give Council a little background information of how we got to this point. I want to thank Peter Wallace, Director of IT Department, as well as Chris for, for bringing this forth to, to light. I think the main thing I want to hone in on is that this is just a start with a tremendous upside to wherever we want to go in our city and making sure we can get that outreach to better communicate and provide services for our community. One of the things that I'm really excited about is not only the, the news page and the updates, but the push notifications. If we think about the flooding event we just, just had here, seven inches of, of rain, this app be a, a really, really crucial and important way to communicate with our citizens about closures of streets, reroutes, and different pathways throughout our city. When you think about the development that's going on, and I know Ms. Councilwoman Henley and I were, were in charge of seeking public input and, and really improving that, this will be, the app be a good way to notify a community, hey, you know, there's particular development or it's going to go on within your, your session of the city, come out at a meeting location and come out and, and meet. This is just the startup, and not to mention the all-important information that's on your home screen as far as picking up trash, you know. I know a lot of times I forget what day the trash goes out, and I'm usually a day behind. So this is, is very important with that. But I just want to just thank Chris and Peter as well, because when we initially sat down and started this, you know, I think they tried to create something where it was kind of just structured and try to see my vision, when, when the reality, you know, just wanted to push those guys and say, what, what vision do you have? How would you really make something really stand out and bold and innovative for our entire city to be proud of? And this is what you see here. So I just want to say, great job, guys, and, and great job for really creating the foundation. I'm really looking forward to seeing this come to light. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tower and Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Councilman Rouse, for your work on this and everybody you had a part in. I also want to thank whoever was responsible for our new, new screen here. Is this, is this a new screen? Everything looks brighter and sharper than...
Councilmember, and to the rest of the council and mayor as well, we're going to brief you on the new VBGov webpage next week. I think I wanted to save, wanted to save the surprise so Julie can roll it out for you all, but this is a snapshot of it. I was hoping you all didn't notice, but it is a snapshot of what the new screen could possibly look like as well, and you'll get more of a briefing next week on that.
Okay, great. My main interest, just, I think this is a great idea, entirely supportive of it. I want to make sure that, two things, one, that information for residents of the beach about what is happening in the resort area gets onto this system in due course, because particularly parking issues, I think we are, as our parking program gets more sophisticated and we're able to give directions to people about where parking is available in a visual way as well as narrative form, I want to make sure what's going on with the parking folks and what's going on with this are integrated and, and separately, but perhaps, but maybe not, for tourists, for visitors to Virginia Beach. So they can have, if not this, this app, one that is more oriented, they don't care when the garbage is picked up, but they do care about parking, they do care about what's going on in the resort area. They, they may need information about what happens in an emergency, flooding and the like. So I know we, we are spending money on digital communications in the tourism industry at a pretty pace, and I just hope, hope we continue to push these forward, but make sure they all work together, Chris.
Yes, sir. We actually have a, an app we're slated to release in the spring that will actually focus more on parking and events down at the oceanfront. Actually, it's really events around the city. And that, we will be integrating, not only will there be a standalone app, but it'll, the goal would be also to integrate that into this application. So if you're coming from this app or you download the app, the standalone app, you'd be able to get parking info for really any, any parking areas around the city that we can get access to.
Thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
I look forward to that.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. And I completely echo what Mr. Tower said with, with regard to having an ability to, to have resort-based things on, on this app. But I think, I think also it needs to almost be bifurcated so that, because I know when I go visit places, a lot of time I'll download the app and wherever that location is, and there's a lot of stuff that I don't really care about, you know, about there, but I do care about things that I want to see. So I think, I think ideally it would be good that it could have both visitors and residents. But one of the things, when, when Aaron mentioned this last week or the week before, that I thought was, was so good about this was actually consolidating everything, getting rid of the VB Works and all those other ones that, that you kind of have to figure out, which one do I click in order to, to, to come up with something. And, and hopefully you guys can get some sort of secure element in this so that people can access public safety reports, police reports, traffic accident reports, fire reports, that sort of thing that they want to be able to get based on, you know, phone numbers or however you can get it, because I think that, that would be helpful too. And I think, I think ultimately the goal would be, rather than have people call and try to figure out what to do or email, they just pick up, pick up their phone and say, oh, I'll click on here and I'll get, get the accident report from whatever, and I'll be also able to figure out what my trash day is and all that kind of stuff, because I think a lot of us use, use these apps for, for a lot of different things. If I can, you know, use my Verizon app to not only tell me where 5G is, but it'll also tell me how much I owe this month and all these other things, I think, I think we need to be able to have that level of consolidation in this and, and make it as, as user-friendly for the citizen as possible, then I think it's going to be very successful.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
I think what's also, what's also important to note is that every single council member will, will be allowed to beta test this. So you'll be allowed to, hey, share your ideas and other things such as that, that can help make this app even better. This is a way also, I think we'll be reaching out to five, 10,000 beta testers.
Potentially.
Potentially. Potentially, beta testers to, to give us more input from this, this app and to kind of work out the bugs on, on that. So council members, I know as well as department staff have opportunity to say, all right, this works well, if this doesn't work well, we can add this, let's take this out. But also keep in mind, it's just, just Phase One of right now is just a starting point too.
When is Phase One?
Say that again?
When is Phase One going to start?
So we're, we're starting Phase One now. The goal would be to deliver it hopefully by the end of Q1 of 2021 calendar year.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Moss?
Will it be virtual private network agnostic? So if people operate through a virtual private network, will the system still work?
Yes, sir. You'll be able to, for the initial onboarding screen, it'll either use your, your GPS if you allow access to that or to determine your location, or you can just type in an address to figure out, you know, what, what services to show initially.
Well, see, what I'm asking, when you go through a virtual network, you're going to see the virtual private network address, you're never going to see the person.
Yeah, we, we're not worried at all about that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Wu.
Thank you for your presentation, especially like when you talked about receiving updates, just like the holiday that we recently had that was made in a short, short period of time. I think that's excellent because, you know, today people live, live in real time. So I, I think that's a wonderful thing. Also want to thank Councilmember Rouse for the resolution and the vision that he has with this. I think it's very innovative and not only just a good idea, but it just makes sense to consolidate everything, to make it easier for residents to follow what we were doing. And it also adds to transparency as well. My question is, and I'm sure that you probably, you know, have that already included within rolling out the program, is training for all members of Virginia Beach, our seniors and young adults, so they, they can have the best benefit of the app. I'm sure that's, you're going to incorporate that as well. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, I just want to thank Councilman Rouse for his initiative, but also the staff, IT staff, for working this and the collaboration that went in there, obviously. And, you know, Mr. Wood brought up about, you know, you know, public safety using this. I did speak to the police chief at length the other day, and he did mention that he wants to use data as, you know, make reports and statistics available to the community. As Ms. Wu said, this would help build transparency. So anything we can do to improve communication and, you know, build those bonds of trust with our community and just bring the community more united and together is a great initiative. So thank you to all involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. DeHany, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the last briefing will be provided by the city attorney's office. The attorney's office will brief you on the sale of access city property at the northwest corner of Kempsville and Princess Anne Roads.
Good afternoon. I am happy to be here to talk about this upcoming project and brief the public in advance of our votes that will be coming up in early December. So this project is going to be dealing with a, the area at the intersection of Kempsville Road where it splits with Witch Duck and Princess Anne, and we have four quadrants, the northeast, southeast, southwest, and this one deals with the northwest quadrant. Next to Emmanuel Episcopal Church, we own the area in yellow, which is an assemblage of a various remnants of properties that we acquired as part of the Princess Anne Road project over a period of a number of years. And then there's also an area in blue that is the area of proposed street closure. When the new Princess Anne Road came through, this was the old Singleton Way that was the original Princess Anne Road, and as a result of the realignment, we have some excess road that will also be available now for sale because it's not needed for public use. We lost a slide somewhere in here, but I will tell you briefly, the buyer is going to Princess Anne Witch Duck Associates, One LC. The purchase price is $1.420 million. It's going to be the 2.812 acres. As I mentioned, the two areas, the city right-of-way is about 2.1 acres, the area of the proposed street closure is about a little less than .7 acres, and the buyer will re-subdivide those two areas together. Additionally, the buyer is going to complete the voluntary remediation program with the Department of Environmental Quality. Oh, there we go, our slides just out of order. All right, so the voluntary remediation program is with the Department of Environmental Quality. When we acquired these properties, they had some history of environmental contamination from a dry cleaner as well as a gas station that had originally been on there. The city enrolled the program with the DEQ, and what we're going to be doing is having the buyer become the city's authorized agent, and they will be required to complete the VRP, and they will also be required to pay for the costs associated with the VRP and any site development constraints that DEQ requires as part of the VRP. The end result is that the city will receive a certificate of satisfactory completion with the VRP, and that provides enforcement immunity for the city, and that will be a condition of closing. Additionally, the buyer is going to indemnify the city and hold us harmless for any dealings that they have with the VRP on our behalf, and in case the VRP becomes too costly, they will retain a right of termination. Likewise, if they choose to not proceed with the VRP, we can terminate the contract. The concept plan is shown here. There's a, three buildings that they have proposed with parking, landscaping, entrances on Princess Anne Road as well as Singleton, and there is no entrance on Kempsville Road. These are the elevations that are approved by the Historic Kempsville Citizen Advisory Committee, and what they're eventually going to be doing here is a multi-tenant use. It will be retail, possibly medical, possibly restaurant. And what they're working now is to figure out which tenants they're going to be bringing in. Anything they do bring in has to comply with the architectural requirements that are part of the Historic Kempsville overlay. They will also comply with any B4K zoning requirements and any elevations, as I mentioned, that were already approved by the CAC. The city will attain, retain approval rights for anything that differs from that proposed use, and will have those rights for three years following the certificate of occupancy that will be issued by the Department of Permits. And then additionally, there is a CUP that was already approved by council back in March for a drive-through, and anything that is going to be a bakery or a cafe-type restaurant will be automatically approved, but anything different will have to go through the city for approval, again, for the first three years after certificate of occupancy. The buyer is going to be required to build at least two of the three buildings to at least shell finish within the first year and a half after closing. So the next phase of construction, we have the fully executed agreement, will be started after council approves the vote, assuming council authorizes this. They will have the initial phase of due diligence, 120 days, that allows them to do their title work, work on a subdivision, and start the VRP process. They'll have another 180 days to complete site plan approval and the VRP and the re-subdivision to incorporate that area of proposed street closure with the city parcel. 30 days will be closing after that, and then after that, they have 180 days to start construction and then one additional year to finish it, to get the two-year, to get the two shell-finished buildings completed, but all other site work will have to be completed during that timeframe, which includes the landscaping, the parking, the entrances, so that it looks very presentable to the public. So we're looking at a completion of at least, at the latest, spring 2023. The next steps for council will be December 1, we'll be having the public hearing to declare access that's required by statute, and then the vote to declare access will be on December 8. As a reminder, a supermajority vote will be required as a result of the right-of-way, and after that, we will collect the deposit, which is $50,000. We will route the agreement of sale, and that triggers all those next steps as far as the construction schedule. There's any questions?
Okay. Hopefully this is coming to an end of a long saga. Ms. Abbott, anything?
Well, if no one has any questions, I'd just like to say thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's, it's been a long road, and hopefully it's the first step of an even better one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss, would you turn your microphone on?
Keep forgetting that.
That's fine.
You're not voice activated, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The, I guess that's a good thing. But I brought this up before, so I hope at the retreat when the consultant will also be able to figure out, we have spent millions of dollars on digitation, we have spent millions of model, millions of dollars on building our simulation database, but we yet can't provide a visualization of all that information and share to the public and show them what flooding means under different events. Wouldn't it be really good to be able to say, this is what seven inches of rain did, and show it actually visualization, because they can actually show you the bottom of the ocean by making the water go away, so I know the technology's there, because I've watched it on television, so it must be true. But nonetheless, but I think, getting back to make and get people to understand what we're going to be getting for our money, I think we're going to need to have, Mr. City Manager, a visualization product. Today, people are just visual learners, and I think the narratives are great for people like me who like narrative and like words and like tables, but people today, as you can see, we've got to figure out how to make that gap. And, Mr. Mayor, this might be something when you're talking with all the mayors, and we're looking for excellence and trying to increase our local universities' standing as a research institute since modeling simulation, maybe we should be thinking about all the cities coming together to establish an academic chair for flood mitigation, or whatever you want to call it, because this is, and doing the research on our region and then showing the region as a model, because this is analytical, hard science work, to make sure that what you have is going to work, and we could become our own, but, but places that really do well and generate jobs, look at Blacksburg, generating annual 5% job growth. Why? It's the spin-off of a research university. I just throw that out as a, as a thought moving forward, because this is a problem that isn't going away, and I think all that analysis and analytics is a cost, economy of scale there, but also our ability to move forward and be more competitive for funding is the better our sciences, the better we can compete. So I just throw that out as something to think about, as we had that recent experience, which, imagine if we were Houston with 20 inches of rain in 24 hours? That's what they had. So there's, there's a lesson there as to our vulnerability, and I just want to bring that up. And lastly, I mentioned last week, but I know it probably won't make, it's not worthy of the retreat, but soon, but we really need to be talking about how we're going to approach redistricting after the first of the year. I think that's the right time for it, and I'm sure the city attorney has some thoughts to share with, with us as well as we continue our voting rights litigation, but I hope we keep that on our active calendar, how we're going to do redistricting. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, and thank you, Mr. Moss. And just to let you know, there is an initiative underway that we may be hosting. As you know, we have two new mayors coming on board in Portsmouth and in Suffolk, and we're organizing a luncheon to get together with the mayors and the city managers to, you know, to start a discussion on these things. And also that you know that currently Old Dominion is recruiting an executive director for a new program in resilience and, and flooding and things of that nature, so, but once again, you know, leveraging university assets, I, I think is, you know, going to be very much forthcoming. And, and our discussions with the city manager, and I'm, I'm sure that, you know, this is the direction that we're going to be going to, you know, with metrics and, you know, performance measures and, you know, some unique concepts going forward. Okay, that kind of sets way nicely into city council comments. Anybody? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past, today's Tuesday, so on Friday, I got a, received a phone call from Assistant Principal Brittany Church at Parkway Elementary School, and I received this phone call on the concerns from, a lot of kids or students from that school live in Twin Canal Community Village, and there's been a lot of ongoing events in that community which makes the children feel unsafe. So I thought it was pertinent that I asked the new police chief, Mr. Paul Nudigay, if he could attend the meeting. Now, when I asked him, Chief Nudigay is very busy. He's new here, still on the ropes, he has a lot on his plate. But when I asked him, he did not flinch and not one, one second to say, yes, I'll make that meeting. He came to the meeting along with Principal Crystal Arnold Barton, who was there, and it was, it was a great meeting, and we had a lot of ideas that came from that meeting on how we can help this community. But when I asked him, he did not flinch in not one, one second to say, "Yes, I'll make that meeting." He came to the meeting along with Principal Crystal Arnold Barton, who was there, and it was a great meeting, and we had a lot of ideas that came from that meeting on how we can help this community. And so, and some things that are going to transpire. But I was, I was really proud of and really thankful for Chief Nudigay, making that meeting, really proud of our teachers and staff and administration at that, at that school, who are trying their best to make these students and these kids and the youth feel, feel safe in their home. With that being said, there are certain things that they can do and certain things that they can't do. I think this is a challenge I just want to present to council and see where we can help this community by ways of finding more recreational activities for these youth, making sure they feel safe in their, within their communities. Also, more educational resources, we can help with that. And also helping, you know, these parents and families within this community feel this, though, that we understand and we see what's going on throughout our city, we see what they're, what they're going through, and we're all in this together. And so I just wanted to bring that, that to council's attention, and I'm looking forward to working with any and everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rouse. And I think it kind of sets way into, you know, as I have a concern that a couple council members brought forward, you know, definitely, unfortunately, COVID has thrown us a curveball and, you know, provided many obstacles, you know, especially with recreational activities and things of that nature, that hopefully, and Aaron, I think it's a good idea to have that discussion on how we can get around that and still accomplish things. But that being said, once again, you know, we had to, the governor imposed some more restrictions on us in terms of limits and how we can do things. And there were a couple council people that rightfully came up with, you know, concerns about, you know, conducting meetings and to make sure we do it safely. And Mr. Dehoney, I guess, we got a couple air purifiers in here that are going to help out. But once again, with the exchange of people, I think one of the goals is, and then in speaking with Centerra and some folks in the, in the health area, the big concern is, you know, once again, our restaurants have got hit the hardest. And the closing of, at 10 o'clock is imposing a financial burden. But once again, I think it was conveyed to me that they're trying to circumvent a shutdown, you know, going forward, and I think that's, you know, something that really weighs heavily. But once again, I think it's the safety of the public, and I think it's the safety of this council going forward. And, you know, Mr. Dehoney, you brought up a couple of options, and, you know, we put together today, you know, to talk about, you know, to at least get things rolling today, but I think we have to, you know, engage in some discussion. Vice Mayor and I spoke yesterday about ensuring how we can, you know, might be able to manage, you know, we have, we have to respect the public's right to come in here and communicate with us, and, but once again, is there a better way to do that? And Mr. Wood, your thoughts yesterday?
Well, I was just following the emails going back and forth with Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower, so they might, they might want to address what their ideas and concerns are on this.
Okay, yeah, okay, Mr. Moss and then Mr. Tower.
I'll go first, though. I was responding to an email that Mr. Tower sent to all of us. As I expressed when the city attorney talked with me on Saturday, my mic's on, that my biggest concern was safety of the public and feeling like they had to come down here to make their point made. And also, and we, as I talked, responded to Councilman Tower, I said, "Also, for informal sessions where we're only receiving briefings and no public participation, then whether you watch on TV or you watch here in person, it's the same relative experience because you're not interacting, you're not providing comment." And so clearly, those are times when we could do remote, or we could just be here by ourselves. Likewise, with our retreat, retreat, people get to come and passively watch, but they aren't part of the retreat. So if, whether you watch live streaming or in person, it's the same. So we could also reduce the number, I hate hanger-oners, but from a staff perspective, that's a Navy term, keep the staff numbers to the absolute minimum as well. We could stay well under 25, be a good experience, and have it, the public still gets to watch it, it's still on tape, it's still reviewed, but we would be minimizing more and keeping, I think, with the governor's intent. And for people who are among us, higher risk, I guess I have some immunity for a little while since I had it, but nonetheless, I'm sensitive to people that haven't and don't want to acquire it also, and I can appreciate that, is that there shouldn't, things like informal sessions, if people want to come and want to participate by WebEx, that that's, we should encourage that, versus saying, "Hey, they, they weren't there, they weren't in person." So that was my comment back to Mr. Tower's concern. I know there's been an issue about executive sessions. I personally feel that's a decision for us to make, if we're comfortable. I've been in many classified VTCs where you have to assume the person on the other end is making sure everyone has the same clearances they're supposed to have, because you can't check that, but you're talking. I have full faith in the integrity of each of the members that sit here. The voters have given them their trust, so I don't have an issue personally with someone participating in an executive session by a WebEx or a teleconference, but, because I think that's a risk I'm willing to accept, but that's me, Mr. Mayor, and that may not be a risk to all my peers, but I do believe that is ultimately our decision to make. I think we want the city attorney to advise us as to what that risk is, but that room leaks like a sieve anyway, so I don't know what, what the real concern would be. But nonetheless, I am open to keeping with what we have, but I also acknowledge the good logic that Councilman Tower expressed in his email to all of us, that there are, we can go to, certainly for the informal sessions, remote if we think that's an advantage to us, but I also think we need to be looking at retreats and other events and redefining who needs to be there and keep the numbers down and minimize, and set a good strategic messaging to the public. I know there's an exemption for governance, but you know, it's always like, we impose all these restrictions on everybody else, but then the king says, "But I'm exempt." I think we might have a better appreciation for what our contemporaries in the business world are experiencing, if we're experiencing them ourselves. And I think that's not a bad message to send, and that was basically the nature of my feedback that I share with all of you and specifically with Mr. Tower. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tower?
I appreciated Mr. Moss's response. My email, just for the public's purpose, simply suggesting that we consider going to all virtual meetings, and my concern was also the public. I was less concerned, as I was writing that memo, about ourselves as I was for staff and, and the public that are here. It just occurred to me that when you restrict public to 25, on our ordinary day-to-day business, that may work perfectly well, but I really am concerned that the first time we have an issue that a, a great number of people want to attend, or an issue that's very important to one or two people, maybe not to everyone, but they, in, in this time of rising COVID infections, just simply don't feel comfortable going out, that we provide them the alternative. The problem is, even if they have the alternative, if there's also a live meeting, they are going to feel pressured to come and make their presentation on a live basis, because I think it's just instinctive that you, if you really care about an item, if you're being there, number one shows the effort of coming there, and number two has more impact. So it's really, in addition to complying with the kind of COVID restrictions, or it's, it's not simply compliance, it's, it's trying to go beyond that and think about what the citizens are really thinking about, having a meeting where 25 people are reduced and knowing, well, how, let's see, am I going to be one of the 25? How do I do that? What happens if don't? Maybe I can be one of the 50 because there's a holding room? I just think it's simple, simpler for us to hold meetings that we can, we can do it and we can get better at it. Some of our peer cities are doing this and have been doing it for quite a while, and I'm just concerned that we're going to have an outbreak, and I don't want to be part of it if I possibly can avoid it. With the will of the council is to continue to have in-person meetings, I will continue to attend in-person meetings and, and welcome all citizens who are here. I'm not trying to avoid them, I'm just trying to set a, set a tone that encourages people to be careful and also is fair. And in some ways, I'm just not sure it's fair to have public hearings when you can only have 25 people and, and it's a matter of great importance. Anyway, that was, that was the email that started it off, and I think I've said all I need to say. Thanks.
Mr. Wood, then Ms. Wilson.
Thanks, and, and I certainly appreciate the, the comments of Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower on this. The one thing I would say is, we do have the option to put speaker limitations in like we did when we were going all virtual. If you all recall, we only had speakers on items that required a public hearing, and the city attorney can correct me on that, but I believe, for example, tonight, we're going to have a speaker on 12 items that technically don't, don't require a meeting, and that's going to be 40 minutes or so of, of contact with, with somebody here. So, you know, we, we do have that option, if, if we choose to do so, to, to reenact those same restrictions, if we want to do that, and that may be a way of doing a hybrid situation, but, but that, that's something for the council, council to think about.
Well, I think we're all concerned about the, the safety and the welfare. I mean, that's always our number one concern, the safety and welfare of our citizens. And when the city attorney called me, I said I could go with either option two or number three, but, but I, and having lived through option one of going all virtual, it's, I mean, it's always better when we're together and we can see each other, and there's certain good aspects of that. However, with, with the rise, I was just thinking, maybe just till the end of the year, we only have three more meetings. We could, we could do all virtual, and if we need to have a closed session, we could all come together and for a closed session, which wouldn't include the public. So I would be in favor of supporting Mr. Tower and doing all virtual, at least just for the next few meetings to the end of the year. And if we need to have a closed session, then come in person. I'm not as comfortable as, as John is about online closed session. There's just too many things, I think, can go awry, even though it, the word does get out, you know, you're, you're able to tape it, Jerry, well, you don't know who's in the room, you know, there's just all kinds of things. And I, I would prefer to do closed session in person, so those are my thoughts.
Mr. Bullerchi?
Well, thank you, and I just want to begin by saying, of course, that I agree with all the comments that were made, that our first and highest priority is the safety of residents, staff, and, and of this body, of all of us, of our community. And, and I, and I don't think that there's necessarily an easy answer here, because there are a variety of competing interests and priorities. And so, you know, I, and, and also, I'd like to just say that I will fully support the decision that the council makes as a body, and I have every confidence that that'll be the best and, and right decision. But I would like to present some diff, an alternative perspective than what's been presented already, which is that we do have also an obligation to the residents of Virginia Beach to perform at our highest function. And I think that, from my point of view, our highest function is achieved when we can have meaningful dialogue with each other about the issues that we face together that residents of Virginia Beach are facing. And that synergy, that collaboration happens best when we're together, even at a safe, socially-distanced environment, and I think we've achieved that here. Also, I think it's important to note that we have options. Staff has options. I'm aware that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dehoney, but any member of our team who would prefer to participate virtually has an option to do so, is that correct? So with regard to the concern for staff, I would respectfully submit that members of our, of our team who serve the city so well do have the option of participating virtually, if they're compromised or simply if they don't feel comfortable. And we've heard from family members of city staff who have expressed concern for their loved ones, and we've assured them that they have every, every availability to participate virtually, if that's the best choice for them and their family, and I respect that. And I think the same principle applies for residents, and I think the same principle applies for members of this body. We could participate virtually. I certainly don't hold a prejudicial view to a person who participates via WebEx, and I don't expect that any other, any others do too. I think Mr. Tower makes a very, very good point, that that may be an instinct, but I think that one of our challenges is to get beyond that instinct. And I, I don't hold, I don't hold any persuasion one way or the other if a person appears in person, or if they appear through WebEx or virtually. So having said all that, that's just a long explanation to say that I think that there is value in meeting in person, and even if that requires we spread out more, I would support that, but there's nothing like being together, reading each other's faces and body language, having a meaningful dialogue with all the options presented. Any person, council member, staff, member of our community, has the option to not be here and to participate in a full, complete way virtually. And I think one perspective here that I'm just sharing is that it's nice to be able to exercise all of those options, including the in-person. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, making now, I'm, I'm open to all the options that are presented today, but I do want to focus on something that Vice Mayor Wood said about council reenacting the policy where we have speakers speak on public hearing items. I think this will be a great way to ensure the safetyness of our staff, as well as our colleagues, and, and not being here a lot longer than we would have to, but, but I also think, again, and, and this is about safety, I think, you know, and however, I look forward to the city's attorney's advice on this, but I think that would be a positive step to reenact that, that requirement.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Ms. Henley?
Well, I appreciate the comments from everybody, and I think we all have, everybody has to, to consider all kinds of perspectives, and safety is certainly paramount at, at this time. And I think it's, it's good and important that each person get to decide what is best for them, and so we do need to offer options. And I, I do like, though, the opportunity to be together, because I think it's important that we show our citizens that we are on the job and that, that we are doing the work of the city and the city is, is going forward. But I, I think it's also very important, at this time particularly, that we, we spend some time at our meetings talking about this pandemic and, and perhaps providing information to our citizens. You know, we get all of the national news, and we get a state for a regional kind of thing, but i, if there are things that we can let our citizens know about what's actually happening in this city and/or, or processes and so forth, I know I've had some confusion from people about, well, how do I know whether I've been exposed to somebody who's exposed to the, who has the environment? If you go to any kind of medical facility, that's one of the questions they ask you, is, have you been around anybody who has tested positive? Well, how do you know? I, I think we can provide some information that's very important for our people to, to have, and I, I hope that we can come up with some way to keep people abreast, particularly during this, these next few weeks, which I think are critical with the holidays and so forth, so that people can get some comfort with what's going on, and perhaps we can provide some information to people to help them through this time, because I think it's going to be difficult. And, you know, with the winter coming on and the, the concern for greater spread when people are closer and so forth, I think there's a lot of information we need to be providing to our people at some point during these, these meetings that we have, just so we can just so we can stay on top of it for Virginia Beach. And, you know, I don't know, sometimes I hear an awful lot about El Paso and, you know, other places. And, you know, you're very concerned about what's happening there. But what's actually happening in Virginia Beach? I think it's important for us to have that as a part of what we're talking about each week.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Mr. Moss.
I certainly appreciate that often we have, I'll just put it this way, less than a diversity of speakers on items that are under ordinance and resolutions. But that notwithstanding, it's hard to prejudge in advance what these items are going to be. And as I went back and just looked at these items, there are people that would want to come and speak. And so if we're doing things for expediency of time, our purpose should always be accountability to the public. And that shouldn't be something that's sacrificed for expediency, except under the most extreme circumstances. I don't know that we're there. As a matter of fact, I don't think we're there. And so if we're going to meet and continue to meet here as we do, I think we need to be open for full business, as we usually do, and the full, back to regular order. And if we're not on regular order, then we shouldn't be meeting in this kind of a format. So that's just my thoughts.
Okay. Okay, if I maybe make a suggestion here and, you know, come up with a hybrid of maybe suggestions. But Mr. Duhany, at first, you mentioned, you know, before about the possibility of implementing some aspects of the second option that we talked about, maybe, you know, diverting some of the folks into the kind of the on-deck circle type of format. Or is that a possibility?
Mr. Mayor, I think option two, which I'm not recommending or even saying this is where the body should go. But option two that we mentioned was that we would only have residents come and speak specifically for the item. And then when they were done, they would leave the building or go over to the overflow and only have council and staff in the room at the time. And then the speaker comes, say their piece, and then they leave the room or either leave the building or go over to the overflow room socially-distanced. So that was another option. You know, the other option as well is, and I don't know where the city attorney is on this one, but I think some members mentioned this as well. Is it possible for the body and staff to meet socially-distanced and then have others participate virtually as well? That's probably another option as well.
Mark, could you give some opinions on some of the opinions?
Some of these suggestions, while they make a lot of common sense, are not abundantly clear what the answer is in law. The FOIA law says that where three or more of you are gathered, you are having a public meeting and that that meeting must be, quote unquote, "open to the public." Whether that means the public has to be entitled to be physically present with you is not clear. I would say that it would be a clearer and safer approach to at least allow speakers to be able to come in and appear before you and then go out into another room. But I can't tell you that it would be unlawful for you to require speakers to participate only virtually. And I don't believe that there's any opinions or from the attorney general or court opinions that clearly decide that question either way. So I think this council should do what it thinks is in the best interest of the public. And we will defend any challenges that arise. If there were something that were clearly unlawful that you were proposing to do, I would tell you. But I don't believe anything that I've heard yet is clearly unlawful. And so if you believe that those are approaches that you feel it necessary to take, then I think you should take them.
Okay, Mr. Ballucci.
Well, I just have a question related to logistics for Mr. Duhany or for any other member of the staff. We're meeting in a beautiful room. It's a really nice room. But there are other larger spaces within this building that perhaps could accommodate more social distancing and more people. And I'm wondering, and I don't want to second guess. I know a lot of strategy went into making the decision to be in this room and for all the other logistics that are played out. But it seems to me downstairs is a huge room that might make a more suitable meeting space.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and Councilmember Ballucci, we ended up in this room for the, I think there was a couple of things. And Mr. Williams isn't here as well. But I think one of them was also that those spaces were starting to be used again. And then the other item was the acoustics of the other building, of the other meeting rooms for technology and also for some members of council and staff. They had a difficult time hearing. But in particular, the acoustics and the feedback from the speakers, we couldn't really get a good technology way to work that current room with that current setup and how it is right now. I think that was the main reasons why we ended up in this room.
Mr. Ralphs.
Mark, can you just clarify, help me or clarify the speaker policy? I just want to be clear, while I think it's very important, we have opportunity to hear from the communities, the public, particularly when it comes to items on our agenda. I think it's important that we understand that, you know, the pandemic and where we are with the rising cases and taking steps to mitigate that. So my biggest concern is about safety. And I'm just concerned about the issues on items that, you know, someone who's not directly related to or applicant, maybe, maybe speaking on different items. I'm just curious on our speaker item, our speaker policy.
So your speaker policy provides for public input on a greater array of items than state law requires. State law requires public hearings on a specific category or categories of things. All planning items or virtually all planning items require a public hearing, disposition of public property, some financial transactions. All of those, the state code provides specifically that there be a public hearing. And it provides what the notice that must be given to the public about that public hearing is. All other items that come before this body, you allow public speakers. You allow people to come and speak, and that's part of your speaker policy. That speaker policy is not required by state law, but it has been your historic practice, suspended only during the initial period of COVID. With respect to distinguishing between speakers based upon their relationship to the item, that's where you start getting into First Amendment considerations. And so I think you have really an on-off question here. If you're going to allow speakers on an item, then you need to allow anyone who wishes to speak on that item. I don't think that there's a practical and legally permissible way to distinguish between who you allow to speak and who you don't allow to speak with respect to specific items. But you can distinguish between those items where public hearings are required by law and those where public hearings are not.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
This question is probably for Julie, but she knows the most, mostly, probably knows the most about it. But I know that we utilize public input and WebEx. And I think that they've recently had some integration features. And so I'm wondering, is there a way to utilize the public input tool on the WebEx platform and maybe provide a secondary option for public participation that's on the record? I know that I've chatted with Julie about how we could integrate Facebook Live comments, but that is maybe not the wisest choice considering the platform. But I know that public input has a lot of great tools. And I know that they have an integration with WebEx. So I'm wondering if, you know, for the constituent that wants to come but doesn't want to be in person, but maybe doesn't want to wrestle with trying to get a video feed or a telephone feed up, could, do we have a live written comment option that we could integrate into WebEx?
This is a very timely question, actually, because we are literally renewing with them. It would be an add-on to what we have. They were kind enough not to raise our price, again, for the third year in a row for us. So, but they have evolved tremendously, and so I can certainly look into that. I'd also probably defer to the city attorney to make sure that if you restrict it through that means, that that does not deprive anyone of their ability to exercise what you've set out by policy, which is my ability to come up here for three minutes and speak to a topic. So it could be an alternative, but I don't know if that would be something that Mark would see as would fit with your policy.
Well, and I don't know that it has to be an alternative. I just think there is a group of people that want to give feedback but maybe don't have the ability or don't want to get on a video feed, and they don't want to come in. So if there's a way to still make their comment a part of the total record and say, hey, you know, we're going over this agenda item. Is there any speakers? No, can we pause and just let the feed show us who's commenting? That way, that feedback is still given, but it is not, you know, it's not. I think it's a different audience. I don't think it should be used as a way to say you can't give public comment virtually or you can't come in person, but as another option for the viewer that may want to give feedback but doesn't want to go through the other two ways. And I was looking at it last night because I was curious about. I know we've had a lot of stress about WebEx, and I wanted to know what other features are about. And I noticed that public input had the WebEx integration. And I know we've had good experience with public input, so. Thank you.
Okay, if it's okay at this point, we still got, you know, the agenda review and everything. Could I make a suggestion, you know, going forward? We only have a couple of meetings left this year, okay? And the other thing, we did agree to a meeting on the 15th. Maybe it might be to our advantage to, you know, put that into abeyment and not have it. Because, you know, the other thing is we pretty much work through the summer, too. And unless there's pressing items, which I, you know, hopefully may not be. So that would give us two more meetings. Next week is a workshop, and then we would have the two meetings to conclude the year. But the other thing is, I think, if, whether any council member that wants to, you know, to do things virtually certainly has that option. And as of right now, based on what I saw about the, you know, potentials, I don't think we have any real hot issues unless I'm mistaking, you know, going forward over the next couple of weeks. So maybe just do the things, you know, just finish out the year. And then, you know, depending on what goes on. If you remember the last time we had a spike in COVID, it lasted a couple of weeks. And then, you know, things eased up. I'm not sure that's going to happen, but just a thought.
I think there are two items. If we don't do them on the 15th, I would really like to know how we're going to meet more than just on Tuesday when we come back in early January. One of them is budget resolution guidance. The city manager is deep in with his departments, trying to make all that work. And he's got that pretty good Ouija board, trying to figure out where the 11 people on this council are with the budget. So I do think that has some sense of urgency. And I would default, obviously, to what the city manager thinks he can accommodate. And I know he'd be very candid with this. The second item, because this item once before got so far behind on the calendar of what we have to do and develop that we didn't get there. But then COVID economically took it off the plate. But if it hadn't, I don't think we would have been otherwise ready anyway because we hadn't done the homework. And that's the bond referendum for flooding. So while I'm not opposed to not having a meeting on the 15th because that wasn't going to be the final answer to that, it was going to be hearing from the consultant, getting some ideas. And maybe that can be shared in another way. But we just have to set out a different work plan that's more than just Tuesday. If we're going to one meet, I think the city manager's need from us, relative to the budget guidance he says he wants and we should provide. And secondly, to keep us on some kind of timeline that makes it reasonable to have done the necessary homework, to be ready to talk to the public, Mr. Mayor, and to engage the public. So those are two items, I think, that are time-sensitive. I'm not saying we can't push it, but then January is going to become of, you're going to spend a lot more time together than we normally would. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. Manager, would it be possible to move that up a week? You know, maybe just even have a longer last meeting of the year? That's why they pay you the big bucks, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, anything's possible if the body wills it. But Councilmember Henley really shook her head at me like, absolutely not. So I think this really needs to be a decision of the body and not the manager. We can accommodate whatever the body wants.
Okay, is this going to be a voting meeting or just, or could we make it a workshop?
So from my recollection, the 15 is a glorified workshop. It's going to be a half-day.
But as long as it's not a voting meeting, then we don't have to contend with the folks then, right?
And to my understanding, what I heard, and then what I was going to talk to Mark about and come back to the body with is I was going to propose that we make the 15th only for essential staff and council members and the mayor and virtual, and we will just make virtual participation an option.
Okay, would that be acceptable to everybody?
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I interject for just a moment? Historically, your retreats is what we, is what really the 15th is going to be, is not. VVTV is not there. They don't record, they don't televise, they don't stream anything. So I just want to make that, make you all aware of that. They never have historically. We don't even do an audio recording. We do minutes and we take the report from the.
Let's just change it.
So I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. So if we need to have VVTV there, we can get on their calendar.
Okay, and Ms. Abbott, then we got to move on.
I just think in light of the circumstances, we should just livestream it. I think that would be appropriate, and that way.
Would that be okay to everybody?
Everybody can watch if they want to.
Okay. Okay, so in words, just go ahead and move forward with the regular agenda, and then we'll just accommodate on the 15th. Is that fair? Okay. Agenda review.
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, we have a speaker on every item. Item 10, we need to pull. Other than that, does anybody want to vote differently or pull any of the items on under ordinances and resolutions? Go on once. Ms. Abbott?
Number two is not pulled, correct? I'm going to vote no on two. And then on number 10, I'd like to note my abstention on 1A. And I have a disclosure letter to put on file. 10, and inside the actual ordinance, I'd like to note my abstention on 1A.
10 is being heard.
Oh.
Okay. Ms. Henley.
I also would vote no on two.
John?
I'm voting no on two, no on one. I'll give my reasons at the end of the vote. I'm voting no on number three.
Okay, hold on, no on one, two, and three?
Correct. One of the issues I raised before when we had this, also, I'll be abstaining relative to the add-on, which deals with the dome site. You may recall that I asked that the question be divided. It's not identified within the body as A or B. But the first one is Section 15.2-5931, which deals actually with the acquisition, so.
Which item is that, John?
Item five.
So, okay, you want to abstain?
And I think it's item 14 within the listing, if I memory serves me correct.
So abstaining on item?
14 has two sections. One deals with one section of the statute being modified relative. It's driven by the acquisition of property, which I have to abstain from. And the other section I can vote yes on because it's independent of the acquisition of private property. I think the city clerk's nodding that she's got that down. On six, I'm abstaining. They're not numbered, they're just narratives in the body.
Okay, is this still under?
No, this is six, item six.
Under resolution to support the agenda?
They have an offshore win initiative there. And I have a standing policy relative to Dominion Resources. And there's an economic conflict, so I have a letter on file. Well, I have, well, I'll say my comment on item five, but I'll make it here. Mr. Mayor, you may recall when we had the legislative agenda, we talked about increasing the diversity of our court system. And I said, it's interesting, we're asking the court system, the General Assembly, who appoints them, to exercise greater diversity. But we have no such policy for ourselves on our boards and commissions. So I'm, hopefully I can join with my good friend, Councilmember Ballucci, coming back forward with a resolution that we ourselves would expect of ourselves what we're asking the state to do, which is have a more concerted effort for diversity on our boards that make major policy considerations. And that's all my items. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that wants to abstain or vote no or pull any of these items?
You're not, you're not on planning yet, right?
Not yet, we're still.
Okay, I have one on planning, too.
Okay, all right.
Planning.
Okay, under planning, Thomas Brown subdivision reg.
Okay, under planning, Thomas Brown, subdivision regulation variance at 1412 Duck Run Court and 5145 Shell Road, Bayside District. Mr. Jones?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, consent. Number two, Donald and Diane Horsley, subdivision variance at 3340 Ives Road, Princess Anne?
That's fine for consent.
Okay, number three, Ruth Wilson, variance for subdivision regulations, 865-877 Sandbridge Road.
That's also fine for consent.
Okay, Hal J. and Deborah Woolard, 15-foot-wide planted unnamed and unapproved alley street closure, 833 South Atlantic Avenue, the Beach District. Mr. Tower? Okay, John S. and Deanna M. Haas, street closure 15-foot wide, planted unnamed and unapproved alley, 837 South Atlantic Avenue, Beach District.
Good for consent.
Okay, Latifah Privet, Anthony Privet for a conditional use permit, Ray Family Daycare, 4494 Cherrywood Lane, Centerville District. Ms. Wooton? Consent. Let's see, do we have, nope. Okay, number seven, Valvoline Instant Oil Change, John and Rita Ninos, 5101 Eugene Beach Boulevard, Kempsonville District.
It's good.
Okay. McNeil Properties Dare Associates Automobile Repair Garage, 4901 Cleveland Street, Bayside District.
Fine.
Arrow Fit Human Performance LLC, Isis and Robert Aerosmith, conditional use permit, home occupation, 1209 Fennell Street, Bayside?
Fine.
Okay, moving right along. Number 10, Dale Wooton for a conditional use permit, Ray Home Occupation, at 6336 Blackwater Road, Princess Anne?
Fine for consent.
Number 11, Louis Perrin, conditional use, Ray Residential Kennel at 2121 Mundon Point Road.
I've had no one call me in opposition. I did read the concerns from the Planning Commission, but I'm assuming they worked it all out, and so it's okay for consent.
Okay, items 12, 13, and 14 are all going to be heard. Item 15, Shelley Gail Dagenhart, short-term rental, 2113 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 2B, Beach District.
Henley, no.
Moss, no.
Jones, no.
Okay, Andrew Kooch Gregory, Ray a conditional use permit, 514 Pine Wood Drive, Beach District. Do we have speakers on that one?
Yeah, I want to pull that one.
I go pull that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do not currently have speakers.
Hey, Mr. Tower asked to pull it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Number 18, Red Lion Properties, short-term rental, 100...
Skip 17.
17's being heard.
Okay, sorry.
It's got speakers. Number 18, Red Lion Properties, short-term rental, 1009 Barclay Square.
That's okay for consent.
No for Henley.
No for Moss.
All right, I'm voting no on that as well, so no.
I'm voting no on that one as well.
Moss, Henley.
Which one is that?
Wood, that's number 18. Okay, there's more than six no's, so do you want to hear that, Mr. Tower?
I think we better hear that one.
Yep. I think we should, yeah.
Well, yeah, because otherwise it's consent for denial. Number 19, Justice Swango, Jason, indeed, India Swango, 811 Delaware Avenue, short-term rental, Beach District.
Henley, no.
I'm good for...
Okay, so, okay, consent, Moss, Jones, and Henley, no. Any other no's? Number 20, Lawrence and Susan Olazesco, short-term rental, 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Beach District.
I'm okay with consent.
Moss, Henley, Jones, no, or? Mr. Jones, are you a no on this one, or?
20.
Motion's two.
Might as well.
Okay, so Moss and Henley are nay on that.
Would you recap those that are being pulled, please?
Okay. So the ones being pulled under ordinances and resolution are number 10, and under planning, we are pulling items 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, and 18.
That is correct.
Does that line up with what everybody else has?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion of consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy for the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3. Beach District, Beach District, Princess Anne District. Personnel matters; discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees at any public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A1. Council appointments, council boards, commission committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So I'm...
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Bellucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Eleven to zero.
Okay, this way we can recess into close, but let's take a very short break.